Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wednesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, six thirty P. M. Zoom virtual meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board. I'm going to do a roll call to begin with Amy Glassmire, I, Clark Brewer, Tom Callahan, Paul Colery, Paul Grady.
I'm here.
Hi, present.
Eric Potter. Let me return to Clark Brewer.
Yes, are you doing roll call?
I am.
Present.
Eric Potter. Paul Colery. So we have present this evening Amy Glassmire, Clark Brewer, Paul Grady, and Tom Callahan. Let me begin by saying that the meeting protocol applicants shall be prepared to share their presentation materials. Staff are not responsible for application presentations. Lauren, would you please explain to the public how they can contribute?
Yes, thank you. For any members of the public wishing to comment on an application, we don't actually have any public hearing scheduled for tonight, but we will take public comment as the chair sees fit. You can enter any comments into the question and answer section on the bottom of the screen. You can enter written comments, or you can indicate that you'd like to address the board, at which time we can promote you to use a microphone and camera. We ask that you keep comments to a three-minute maximum. Please try to refrain from repeating information points that have already been made and direct all commentary to the chair. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And the comment about directing comments to the chair applies to everybody in the meeting. This evening, we have an A and R application approval not required under subdivision control law for twenty-six Lambert Lane. Number one zero two six. Lauren, would you tee this up quickly?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So the twenty-six Lambert's Lane, it's one site here that we have two applications for. Oh, I'm sorry. John, could you just pause your screen sharing for just a moment and then we'll get to you? Thank you. I just want to introduce who you have here. So John Ormond is the applicant. He is accompanied tonight by, I believe Alton Stone is here to speak as well. It's just having some trouble bringing him in. And Rod, forgive me, I'm forgetting, blanking on Rod's last name. These are his engineering firm. So we've been in communication with Mr. Ormond and his team for several weeks now. This is what you see before you tonight is iteration, the fifth one that we've actually seen for a A and R and also a common drive application. So the intent that Mr. Orban has is to divide the parcel through an A and R process and then serve the house lots through a common drive application. So you may recall that this was before you recently for the other A and R configuration that the board withheld endorsement because you knew you had prior or additional information that was forthcoming. So here we are tonight. I will note that we have Patrick Brennan here from Ameri Engineers on behalf of the town as a peer review agent who took a look at these plans and has provided the peer review to the board. And then that'll be all for now. I'll just, I'll just also give you the point of information that in addition to myself, Mr. Orman has been in communication with our fire chief, Assistant Fire Chief John Doc Ray, John Helen, our building inspector, and also Charlotte Peck, our conservation agent, because we do anticipate that there will also be a conservation filing for this site. Oh, I also, I just want to note that John Doc Ray, I know he had some comments that had been distributed to the board. He's actually here tonight, so I'm just going to have him join us now as well, just as a point of information. So without further ado, I'm not sure, John, Alton, if Rod, you want to start with your presentation?
Sure. Okay, so.
Alton Stone is not opting in. I'm here. I hear you. Can you hear me? I haven't been included. I see Rod. I see everybody. I'll stay as an attendee.
So Alton, I'm not sure why we're having issues with you have your camera, but we are able to see you and hear you. I mean, I'm sorry, we can't see you. We can hear you.
Okay, I can't. Yeah, right. I'm not cammering here. Did I have to do something?
I hooked a panelist. I pushed the panelist button.
Now I'm, now I'm somewhere on your own page.
Well, it looks like it's your introductory slide to your presentation to us.
Well, it's, no, I got something here. This shows Cohasset Harbor, a bunch of boats in it.
Yes, I believe that John Ormond is sharing a presentation. John, can you confirm that? That's what you'd like to share?
That's his new front page. We got, you got the former one, Alton. John, he's unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Yeah. So thank you, everybody, for attending this meeting this evening. It, we only have a half hour here. Hopefully we can go quickly. We've been working with various members of the class. In the town to make sure that we're following the right guidelines and so forth. And we put together a little presentation here for you this evening so that we can make it dense and get all the information quickly, ask questions quickly, and we can resolve things quickly. So we can kind of get to the bottom of things quickly and move forward. So our presentation today is basically, let me, I'm going to try to go through this one thing at a time here. So our presenters tonight are going to be our land surveyor, Roger, Rod Frandino, our civil engineer, Alton Stone. I'm the project manager and the peer, Patrick Brennan is on as well tonight. So we'll have a discussion from him as well. Are the agenda for tonight just good to go through introductions? I don't know if we want to go around the table and introduce ourselves. But I'm John Ormond, project manager. I guess, you know, Rod, I guess, does everybody normally introduce themselves before we move forward?
Not unless they, not unless there's a pertinent reason for doing that, they can introduce themselves very briefly as they speak. I'm going to keep a, I'm keeping a time so that we make sure we are able to get to the items that you want us to address. So please begin.
All right, sure. So Roderick Frandino will go through the A and R plan reviews, the civil engineer, surveyor, land surveyor, certified land surveyor. He's been out here maybe a week on various times, looking at the property and making sure that all the boundaries are correct. And then we were complying with all setback codes and so forth. And then we'll go through the common driveway review. Rod will bring that up too, and Alton will chime in as well. I guess he worked on part of the engineering aspect of that.
Mr. Orman, I would like to take each one of the items independently, so we will deal with the A and R first.
Okay.
Talk about the common driveway.
Okay, that's perfect. Yeah, that's the same flow that we have here. All right. So we're going to start with the A and R here. We have the peer review feedback last and then questions and answers. All right. So Rod, if you're ready and you can go, take it from here.
Sure. Okay, so we have a peculiar configuration on this lot. But we do have enough area for lots and for lot frontages on Lambert's Lane. And so we configured it to bring about the four lots. And then the last configuration is three of the lots, as you see, is eighteen thousand square feet, which.
We cannot see that. What we see is the introductory slide. Do you have a slide of the actual?
Yeah, he's in charge of that.
Yeah, I am right here. I moved it to the A and R plan review now.
Okay, there you go. So we now have three lots at eighteen thousand square feet and one larger lot. There's the plan. Any questions? As far as zoning goes, we have the frontage. We have the depth and the hundred foot lot width at the proposed building site, structure site.
One thing I wanted to bring up too for everybody here. It's not like we're trying to put four lots on something that doesn't really need four lots. Basically, when the neighborhood was designed, you can see that number twenty-four to the left, that was given number twenty-four, and then the next house to the right at twenty-six Lambert's is number thirty-four. So the original designers of this neighborhood knew that four lots were going to go in here. And it was sized accordingly, and the owners of this property also sold it to me and told me that there were four lots here. So basically, it's been known since the creation of Lambert's Lane that there would be four lots in this, in this particular lot here. And this is evidenced by the addressing numbers here existing twenty-four and thirty-four.
So any questions? I have a hard time, I have a hard time accepting that answer.
Mr. Callahan, would you like to make, well, let me ask first applicants, are you completed? Have you completed your presentation?
Well, on the A and R aspects of it, yes. It, I mean, we fundamentally, you know, we had a peer review on this. We follow codes and the guidelines.
All right.
So Madam Chair, I'm just going to stop the screen share for a moment. So because these are two filed separately, different applications, what I would recommend is that we pause your presentation for now so the board can deliberate about the A and R application. And then once they've made a decision there, we can then resume and then talk about the common drive because they two, they are two separate filings.
Sounds good.
All right. So I'd like to start with Clark Brewer.
Yeah, I mean, I got the plan teed up on my, on my desktop too. I think that when we looked at it as a informal, I had asked about the, the public way, Lambert's Lane. It is on the public. It is identified as a public way in the street list. But I asked about on the right-hand side that it appears that there's some space that that I wanted to have confirmed that that's actual frontage on the, on the, on the, on the public way portion. It's not some other sliver of lot that belongs to somebody else.
Can we put that up on the screen, please, and see the map again? And then Clark, can you direct us to what you're speaking about?
Yeah, I'd asked about it at our last informal discussion about it. And on, on the right-hand side, some, it looks like the property lines go into what is the public way.
John or Rod, can you reshare the plan?
Yes.
Wait, 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 everybody. You address your comments to me. And Mr. Brewer has the floor and we're getting the map up. So hang on. Mr. Orman, are you controlling your map?
Yeah, I'm bringing it up right here.
Thank you very much. Okay.
So you're talking about this little, this little, this little piece?
That little space right there, is that the part of the public way?
I believe so.
Okay. Some of that public way, some of that public way is shown on your locus on the, on the left-hand side, and it's considerably off locus on the, on the right-hand side. So I mean.
Well, the locus is a general.
My general, my general comments is they have frontage if this is indeed frontage on the, on the public way. But their property lines extend into the, into the middle of the public way, which would be some kind of prescriptive easement, I guess. But it's not identified as such. I mean, I have no problem with the, the basic layout. I get it. It's, it's, it's a weird shape. But you get four lots because you've got a hundred feet of width where your houses are, fifty feet of frontage on something. But I would ask the question, what is that something? Because, you know, it says Lambert's Lane. It doesn't identify it as a public way. It doesn't identify the two governing sides and it, and there's no indication that there's a, there's an easement within Lambert's Lane. It, it seems like that's a defect that would need to be fixed in order to vote on it as a, as an A and R. According, based on just my preliminary looking questions from last time, but.
I don't, I don't.
Just a minute, just a minute.
Yeah, no, you don't have to respond.
Speaking first.
We, we, we have a peer review of the, of the A and R. Should we get the peer reviewers' comments before we continue with planning work comments?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Brennan? Sure. Pat Brennan with Ameri Engineers. I did review it. I reviewed it as both applications. My, my major comment on the A and R was in relation to the lot width just because the definition in the zoning bylaw really isn't that clear. So I wasn't sure, you know, how that was typically determined. And, and you know, my recommendation was just to double check with the zoning enforcement officer to make sure that the way that they have it laid out with the hundred foot of width at the front of basically where the proposed structures would go is how, how that's typically, typically determined. In terms of Mr. Brewer's comments about Lambert's Lane, I, I see what you're saying. It kind of looks like the purple dash lines are kind of a way layout. And I, I think the, the surveyor probably has more information on that, but it is a very, it does say that it's variable width. Those purple lines, they look like they're kind of parallel to, to what's actually on the ground there now as the, as the lane. So I'm not sure what those purple lines are. Perhaps the landsaver could chime in on that.
Mr. Brennan, you had several other comments in your peer review. Would you please continue?
Yeah, they, the most of the rest of them were related to the, to the common drive. Yeah, the common drive and then the lots, you know, lot construction, not so much the A and R itself.
All right, thank you. Let's continue, Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, so, so my comments on the, in the A and R are limited to what is the fifty-foot plus of frontage on? I understand Lambert's Lane is a public way, but the, the, the property line edges are delineated. But the, but the way is only delineated by where the asphalt is. So if indeed it's a public way, or I would want to know if there's, if there's an easement that this property owner has to give the town for that public way. And I'd like to see a plan that has the, the actual public way on both sides for this, for this stretch. I mean, it wouldn't be bad for it to extend to Hall Street. But, but so we know exactly what this, what this way is in terms of it's the public way in terms of its width and location relative to these property lines. That is, those, those are my main comments about the, about the A and R. I think they're funky-looking shaped lots, but provided that the applicant provides that additional documentation, which then I'd be prepared to vote on endorsement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Callahan?
Well, I, I share Clark's concern about the frontage. The, the, the blue lot lines and the, where the way is don't seem to match at all. I, I can't with confidence say that there's four lots with fifty feet of frontage here. What, what is the width of Lambert's Lane at this point? But the lit, should I speak now or?
Yes, Mr.
Yeah, go ahead. Somebody, anybody who can answer what it's, how wide is it? All right. So what you have is a, is a, is a way that hasn't been surveyed since, well, two thousand and seven, a plan came through for portion of Lambert's Lane, and they held a survey that was performed in nineteen fifty-nine. It's possible that Lambert's Lane at that time followed the lot lines that are there on the plan. And, but only a portion of them, because I've been out there and I can see that that was given to Lambert's Lane, but it was constructed as final as you see right now. So what you have is an older survey that was retraced and confirmed and placed on the ground. And that's where it ended up. Now, I gave it a forty-foot width. Now, that's a good thing that we would, that I would confirm the easement rights or not, it's really not an easement rights, a right-of-way width that the town has on Lambert's Lane. And, and I gave them their forty feet, twenty from centerline, which is a safe distance. You can't really gain any more on that lane anyway. But we, we can definitely confirm what the town requires for a right-of-way there. And I assume it'll be the forty feet, but I can confirm that for you. With all due respect, I didn't answer my question at all. So I, the pavement that's there today, you know, I, I assume you're not proposing any improvements to Lambert's Lane. So what is the width of the pavement at the site today? Eighteen, I think it's eighteen feet. Of pavement? Well, my notes, I got to find out. And, and Mr. Orman, it, the, the blue outlines of this site, is that what the property lines are today? Is that, is that shown on some exist? Is that shown on, is that shown on an existing plane? Twenty-two feet.
Yeah, so I, let me give everybody a little background, very steep incline right there in that little area there that everybody's talking about. So they couldn't, and there's ledge there, so they couldn't bring the road over that close. So that's kind of why it's like that. But I think they originally intended to, but then they couldn't. So that's kind of why she wound up there.
The pavement's twenty-two feet.
Wide?
Yes.
I think you might want to check that one out again, Rod. And you may want to check that. I go up and down Lambert's quite a bit. And that's one hell of a tight road, extremely tight, heavy, dangerous at best. And you have another car coming your way. You're usually pulling up on side shoulder. So you may want to double-check that. That's just some free advice, because I use that road a lot and it's a, it's a tight, it's a tight road.
It is tight. It's tight in one spot over by where there's ledge, but otherwise it's two cars.
Well, I, I measured the edge of pavement all the way through there. I'm going to bring up my AutoCAD here and make sure I'm not lying. But I understand your concern, you know, and also the, the placement of that old survey upon that. Not a, it's not a, you know. No, it's. Fair concern what you have as far as lot lines. Yeah, it goes out. It's more than, it's more than a concern. It's we have to find a, a finding of the adequacy of the way. And I'm not convinced about the adequacy of Lambert's Lane to serve. Whether the lot line backs up to that forty-foot setback or, forty-foot setback or not, we still have frontage and we still have an adequate way. It's not taking. I don't know that you do have frontage based on what I'm seeing here, because I, I am. I, I would like to see the original plan of this lot. I'd like, you know, at least the reference. I can look it up at the North Registry of Deeds myself, but.
Yeah, we could.
Like to see.
No problem. Yeah, as far as the, the, the right-of-way of Lambert's Lane, and if it's a wide enough, it's not really applicable. It's not like a consideration. The A and R code basically says that as long as you have a legal way there, that's all that applies.
No, it doesn't. It says frontage on an adequate way, so.
And well, there's like, you know, the subdivision control law, law in the state says differently. But as long as it's a, you know, a way generally, there's a renewed amount of case law on it. But anyway, I think Lambert's Lane is okay. It is tight one spot and, you know. It is what it is. I mean, I can't change the width of the entire road. You know.
Mr. Callahan, would you like to continue with your comments?
Those are the two comments I have on this one. I'm, I'm not sure that I have enough information to, to go to endorse this.
All right. Mr. Grady, do you have any further comments?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with Tom first off, but I am curious about that. That a neighborhood that was put in, that this one was allotted for addresses on technically was right now a single lot. And we're proposing to build, that's up at basically the height of the curve. Am I not mistaken? Where the curve starts coming down if you're heading towards the country club?
Really? It's not really a curve. Look at the road. It's relatively straight.
I have looked at it. I've been.
Yeah, so you mean it's, it's, it goes downhill, but it's, it's in a relatively safe. Your line of sight, based on it from an Astro standpoint, is within limits of what's accepted by the state.
I've heard you say that about being accepted by the state. I'm just going by vision. So.
Vision, vision, yeah, you, you have a vector out. You can see safely.
And I'm looking up and over. When I go up and take, when I drive the road, I go up and I take a hard left to come down. And I've seen a clearing. So that's all I'm saying. All right.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, there is.
It's a dicey spot at best.
It, it, it is. I mean, there's a lot of dicey spots in Cohasset, but, you know, they have frontage. They have legal frontage and.
But we're speaking about this one tonight.
Yeah, A and R, A and R, that's not relative to an A and R application, though. That's relative to other permitting process.
No, but I just want to keep us on track.
Building a street that would be applicable, but not, not to an A and R process.
I know, but I'm trying to keep.
I think you're missing the point of Mr. Callahan's comment. What he is saying is that the, the regulation also describes the adequacy of the way. And what we are contesting is the diagrams that we have are insufficient for us to be able to tell whether or not what you're saying is true. You keep telling us, or you keep saying back to us that the state says, in this instance, we are responsible. We are the responsible parties to ensure that there is adequacy of the way, and that includes safety.
Okay, yeah.
Well, my recommendation would be that we get a better set of drawings so that your position is more clearly stated. And that way, we won't be in any debate situation whatsoever. But right now is not clear. The diagram looks as if it's had ink over the, the, the actual topography. We, this is not really an adequate map. There's no indication whatsoever of the topography of the landscape.
Well, it's an A and R plan. That's, that's, we weren't going to file topography on A and R typically. But if you need to see that, that's the next drawing, the common drive. That'll give you the topography. I understand your concerns.
Yeah.
And also, if you could define what, what you'll need to confirm adequacy, that'd be great. As far as, you know, what you need to see diagram. Yeah.
From a technical perspective, it's, it's under forty-eight, Mass General Law forty-eight-one L. We want to know what the grade is and what the width of the, of the roadway is. It's, it's spelled out right there under subsection C, I think it is, under that Mass General Law. But with what I see here, I think we could either, we could, I, actually, I would vote not to endorse what I see here.
Yeah. Adequacy of the public way doesn't apply to an A and R. It only applies to the subdivision road. It doesn't apply to.
Don't argue with me. Your comments get directed to the chair.
Okay, sorry.
This is, this is Alton Stone. Can I comment at some point?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I, I see it, I see an inadequate A and R plan that doesn't address what the frontage is on, and it looks like there's some easements on a public way, of a public way onto this private property. I think I would, I'd be prepared to either vote to not endorse it tonight or if the applicant is willing to file a letter that would not provide him with constructive approval, we could reschedule for another hearing to see an updated plan that shows the full width of the way, that shows the width of the pavement and any grades in, in conformance with forty-eight, Mass General Law forty-eight, Section eighty-one L.
Is that a motion, Mr. Brewer?
No, I think the other planning board member should weigh.
All right, thank you. Mr. Grady?
Yeah, I have another two questions. Now, did we say that this is based, this rendering that you just showed us is based on a nineteen fifty survey? Did you say that, Rod?
Well, as far as based on, that was the first, nineteen fifty-nine was the original survey. I certainly incorporated that into the survey, but.
And so there's been no, there's been no recent surveys done of this?
Yeah, I, I performed a thorough boundary all the way around that thing. And it, and proved out what was done before. And this is what you have on the ground out there. So, and that's how.
Time seeing that one lot on one street is the only one dedicated with, you know, with four addresses. I'm having.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm having, I'm having a difficult time believing that, not believing it, but hearing it, that just one single lot, because these are all pretty big lots, these houses. And, but one alone is designated for addresses back in the planning phase. That's, that's kind of a stretch to me.
I've never heard that argument made in thirty-seven years of practicing law. That because there was a skip in the numbers on a street, that that was designated.
It's not relevant to A and R. It's not relevant to A and R.
I would, I would like.
I think you look at the, the case thirty versus the planning board of Hingham, thirty-two Mass App, CT seventy-two, nineteen ninety-two. The same issues came up and it was not applicable in an A and R.
Yeah, Mr. Orman, we appreciate that. I was going to turn to your colleague, Mr. Stone.
May I just make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm the project engineer and questions regarding grading will proper grade.
proper grades on the road and driveways, and those types of questions will be addressed during the site plan preparation. This this meeting is for A and R lots, not as, as I understand it, not a site plan review, and all those questions will be addressed at that time.
We don't have a site.
We do. We we do also appreciate what you just said, sir, but Mr. Brewer's comments still apply.
Yeah, can I say something?
The the A and R, our basic duty um, as a planning board is to determine that what you propose is not a subdivision under the subdivision control laws and that you have adequate um uh, access um, as well as the required frontage. Those are the minimums and and we don't actually determine whether your lots um, conform to zoning uh, in other different ways. Um. Um. But I I guess I'd need to know if is the applicant willing to uh, write the letter that that um, would uh, eliminate the constructive approval um, and update the plan because I I mean, honestly, think. Of course. Town needs, the town may need to take, do a taking on uh, what is your property here? Because that's where the public way is on your property.
All right, say something. Um, I think. Want me to say something or no?
No, you may say something.
No, the adequacy of way is totally your authority on determining that. When we have an A and R plan, we have to prove there's adequacy of way. So they're totally in their realm here and everything you're saying is legit, so um. I do propose that we should uh, give you another diagram and an an updated survey that will prove out the uh, frontage. And also I'll specifically uh, consult with the town regarding what they want for width and uh, proving out the forty foot that I gave them. If they want more, then then we'll we'll have to deal with that then. Uh, so I agree with what's the concerns for adequacy. Uh, I don't think it can not be surmounted. Um, you know, if, but please spell out what you'd like to see. Your questions like I I heard site distance, I heard different concerns. If you could just spell that out, then we could address them uh, coming forth.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Stone. Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, do you have um, further comments?
Uh. No, other than that, the issue of adequacy of way in an A and R is clearly established by case law, but uh, I I'm looking, I'm looking right now at one of the two plans that make up this lot. This is one from nineteen seventy-four and then the, because I'm looking at your deed and the other one is from a plan nineteen fifty-nine and, you know, they both show Lambert's Lane. I I think you need to reference where Lambert's Lane is, first of all. Um, and I don't care about what, you know, our our common driveway regulations require what the right of way for a common, you know, well, let's skip that comment. I want to know what the actual pavement of Lambert's Lane, not necessarily the forty-foot right of way if Lambert's Lane has a four. I want to know what the actual pavement width is because no improvement, no improvements to that are being proposed. And and that is going to be the actual access to this to this uh, project.
It's here in the plan.
I have that. I have that information. I have that information. I've located the edge of pavement, probably forty measurements. Um, so I do have that. I'm showing twenty-one, twenty-point-five, twenty-two. Uh, that's your approximate width is around twenty to twenty-one. Uh, I've located either side. I do have topography on Lambert's Lane. Uh, you'll see it on the the other. So there you, there you go, uh, twenty to twenty-two.
All right, thank you, person. That was very helpful for clarification. I feel that the planning board um, uh, is lacking sufficient information and we want to be able to make this work for you and we have to be able to abide by rules. So I'd like to ask one of the planning board members to make the appropriate motion.
Boy, can we look at the shared driveway plan first to get some more feedback?
We're gonna, we we are taking each one of these by individual item because that's how they came to us. So we'll be doing that next. But in uh, Mr. Brewer or Mr. Callahan, would please make a motion?
We need the applicant's agreement to uh, continue this so that we don't run into a constructive approval issue. So I guess the question goes to Mr. Orman first, is he?
Oh, yeah, definitely. We're we're going to provide more information and if we decide, if you decide that there's improvements needed on Lambert's Lane, like right across the street, there's a big piece of ledge there and it's very tight. We could blast that out and make it a little bit wider. So we're willing to work with you. We can make Lambert's nicer there.
Well, well, I mean, in terms of our uh, what we need to do tonight, we we either vote not to endorse the plan as presented, and then you can come back with a revised plan or something else. Uh, or you uh, agree to write a letter uh, saying that um, you'll you're you're withdrawing your um, plan without uh, without prejudice until such time you can update it based on our comments and come back. So this isn't, this is a it's not a formal public hearing. This is just a part of regular planning board business. So those are your two options.
All right, so I guess um.
And honestly, there's not a lot of difference. Clark, would you describe the difference so he understands which one would be best?
Well, I I think that of a a a vote to not endorse the plan for these specific reasons probably isn't so good for the applicant. I think his withdrawing um, what he's um, what he's proposed to do so he can come back and give us some more information about um uh, Lambert's Lane as a public way and 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 the the fact that the the way is on their locus on their property. I'm sorry, Lauren Lind had a comment.
Uh, go ahead. Thank you.
We, if the applicant is willing to sign off, we have a standard form that we use for our continuation agreement for a hearing. So if the applicant's willing to sign the like to waive the twenty-one day, what would typically be a constructive approval, then we can proceed with signing that document and continuing this to another time um. You know, and and have a further conversation with a revised set of material.
We don't need to to continue to a date certain, though.
Correct, but you, we would just need the the applicant in good faith to agree to that.
Yep.
And John, is that something that you're willing to agree to?
Yes, yes, but also like if we do make the road wider, you need those plans and details too, because we would have to take uh, we would have to go five feet into the other side of the road. There's one part where it punches down like eighteen feet. But we were going to make that up on our side. Uh, we didn't really get into the details of that, but we we can make the road wider on our side, right? Because
You, yeah.
We don't have to land there. We don't have to blast anything. We could just, we could shift the road forward a bit. And you could have a taking or whatever, and we could move the road so that it's a safer, wider area.
You don't own the other side of the street. You can't do any, you can't.
Well, the 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 town owns five feet of that, right? I think you own ten feet of it, actually.
They, the applicant doesn't own the street.
No, no, no. The street, if you look at the plan, I don't know if we have it up on the screen again. If you look at the plan, the road comes ten feet into my the property twenty-six Lambert's Lane.
Right.
And there's a big piece of ledge right on the other side of that. Um, and so that means that the town probably owns ten feet of that, so.
But that's not the. Yeah, town owns what it needs to provide an adequate, safe way, and they're going to want to know and they're going to come out there and determine it, and then we're going to conform to their to their, the highway surveyor.
Yeah.
That's how, and that's really, it's adequacy and safety is what they're talking and ledge or not, uh, it'll be up to them, so.
Okay, all right, so.
I think we should just do step by step and get your withdrawal, but not your total axing of the job. We could, you know, go forward somehow.
Um, so Lauren, uh, excuse me, Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, I I don't know. Before we move on from this, does uh, Chief Doc Gray have anything to say?
Oh, well, we're gonna, that's gonna primarily come up in in the discussion of the um, shared driveway.
Oh, all right.
But actually.
He might have something to say, though.
I I I.
He might have something to say about Lambert's Lane.
Let's, let's have um.
Yeah, I I I'd like to hear what he had to say.
Lauren, can you promote him?
He's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, good evening, folks. Um, thank you. Because this, your discussion is about the A and R, I would rather hold my comments until the common driveway, so we keep it clean, uh, and it wouldn't interfere with the A and R ruling or decision of the board.
Well, can I, can I ask you, chief, whether you have any concerns about uh, Lambert's Lane itself and getting equipment up and down it?
Oh, yes, I I do, Mr. Callahan, especially uh, where that ledge is. It's it's a bottleneck and where this uh, proposed common driveway is uh, is a true hazard for us to uh, operate um, to get into that proposed common driveway and to exit the common driveway. Um, will definitely slow us down our responses to and from that area. So uh, we need to really look at that uh, that part of Lambert's Lane and as I requested earlier or in my letter to the planning board, uh, a swept path analysis report of how our apparatus would flow in and out of that uh, proposed common driveway.
Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you. Um, uh, so Lauren, would you please summarize what is the best circumstance for Mr. Ormond and Mr. Stone and his colleagues so that we can move on to the common driveway discussion?
Yeah, so I will coordinate um, with Rod and John. After this meeting, I'll I'll reach out tomorrow to get that form to them so that they can request the continuation of the wave of the twenty-one days, and then we will work with them from the town side to uh, based on the comments that we've received from all of you tonight to make sure that they have the information uh, to satisfy the questions that you have about the adequacy of the way, whether it's deed information that you need. The specifics will, we'll get that together for you and we'll determine a date that they can come back. And like you said, it's not a public hearing, but we will just sort of continue this discussion.
This should also not stand in the way of any of the other boards working on behalf of the town and in conjunction with Mr. Orman, for example, with with regard to issues associated with the Conservation Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals. It, we are sort of three entities in this instance, so any work that needs to be done by the Conservation Commission should be done and any negotiations with the Zoning Board should be done, even as we are working on our part as well. So Lauren, do, how do we bring this to a close?
So um, that's all we need to discuss for tonight about this A and R. I will, like I said, I'll coordinate with the applicant and his team to get the documentation where it needs to be, and then now you can move on. The next topic that you have is a common drive application for the same location. I would suggest that you sort of hear the presentation, run through this, think about what questions you have, and then we also know that this matter is going to continue as in a similar fashion, because I'm sure you're going to have questions. This is sort of a puzzle piece. They need the A and R process to unlock those four buildable lots to serve through this driveway. So it, they really do go hand in hand together.
And and I do want to comment that uh, uh, Chief Assistant Chief Doc Ray is here to speak as well as um, the planning board members and the members of the applicant team as well as our peer review. So Mr. Orman, begin.
Yeah, so can everybody see the screen? You know, we just touched base.
Yeah.
So this is the existing driveway of the house. There's a little house here. If everybody can see it in shade where my pointer is here. There's a driveway coming in here now. And the goal was just to keep it simple and keep the driveway where it was and just put a little driveway in here. And then split off to a few houses and back here. There's a lot of land back here. It's buildable. And it's up high. And basically um, and we made it twenty feet wide and we kind of followed regulations. I've had trucks when I moved in here, I had a big truck tractor trailer move in and drop some stuff off moving, and this turn right here is pretty good. You can back out and then pull out. And you can pull back in this. This is a really wide width and the trumpet of this turn is is pretty big. So I've never had any issues of trucks coming in and out of here. Um, so that's why we kind of kept it here. We figured it's good. The line of sight here is very good and the line of sight here is good as well because there's some trees right here. We cut these down. You're going to have a nice line of sight all the way over to here. You're going to be able to see, you know, like four hundred feet almost over to here, and then here is very straight as well. Maybe we can get a better map as well, a a better drawing as well to show this better. But from a line of sight standpoint, the Astro regulations, the speed limit in the street is twenty-five miles per hour. Um, the site distance required for Astro at this angle, ten feet back from the edge of the edge of the road here. It's pretty good. That's why we selected here. We could have moved over here. The neighbor is kind of, I spoke to the neighbor here, he didn't really want it. Um, it would have been a little better over here if we put it um, but we figure we're just keep it where it is uh, and just put it here. We originally listed a turnaround here as well. But then we found out that their turnaround was pretty big and then after further review, we found out that you don't really, you know, the turnaround's a lot of towns like Hingham and all these other towns in Massachusetts only require turnaround if you go over a hundred and fifty feet. And then we looked up the law and codes and you know, everybody's, you know, the uh, state code basically says, hey, if your turnaround is less than a hundred and fifty, you don't really need to turn around. The reason being is if you put a turnaround here anywhere, your fire truck's going to turn around and come back out. Why not just back out here on the Lambert line and use that as a turnaround? I think that's the logic. Um, so that's kind of what.
We will hear the logic from uh, Assistant Chief Doc Ray. But thank you. So so basically what you're saying is there's an entryway on the western side of the property. It reaches up into a hundred and twenty feet. And you have uh, four driveways uh, split off from that, and there's no expectation that there'll be a turnaround or any uh, extra space for a large vehicle or something else to actually uh, revolve and then leave the property.
Well, that's the thing. It's a twenty-foot wide. Instead of having the standard fifteen-foot wide, you go with a twenty-foot wide and then there's space on each side of it and you put a bigger trumpet. That's kind of.
So I'm not, I'm not really familiar with the fifteen-foot wide um, standard.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're describing it as an individual driveway, that might be, but when it's a shared driveway, it's not clear to me that's what this is supposed to be.
Well, the standard for three to five houses according to your regulations is fifteen.
So, so um.
So we're making it twenty. We're making it wider than the standard. So there's more room here uh, to turn around and, you know, if, you know, if you feel we, you need to turn around, like I wrote in my letter, we could easily put one in here. We could put a T-shaped one in here. But then it's like, you know, it's like, do you really need it? Because anybody here would probably just back up here anyway. Would you want to pull up here and back and turn around?
Well, we're we're lucky. We'll have the the Assistant Chief to help us understand that better. So thank you. Do you have any other details or engineering conversations that you want to add to this?
Yeah, so that, so the the shape of these lots is kind of based on, just to give you a little A and R background. Share driveway plan is what drove the shape of these lots. We wanted to try to lay the houses out in a nice configuration, so it's kind of upscale and kind of nice in a nice family community neighborhood here. And we have this lot out here and we're able to make this lot kind of be a part of it as well. So we're going to put like trees all around here, evergreen pine trees all around the whole property. Um, the neighbors are pretty happy with this. I spoke to them about it. They get more screening. Uh, we have screening on the driveway over here. And um, and you know, it's just going to be, it's a, it's a nice solution. If we, if we put a big turnaround in here, it's going to look awkward and just when you drive by in Lambert's Lane and you look in there and you see a turnaround like fifty feet up or a hundred feet up the road, it just doesn't look right. It's just um, it, this is just a cleaner approach and we don't know if the turnaround is really even needed, but you know, John, Doc, go ahead.
Right, thank you.
Rod, did you have anything to add to this or Alton?
I know.
Um, Miss, um, I would like to ask Mr. Ordman, I was um, driving down Lambert's Lane today and I noticed that the property has virtually no vegetation on it. Uh, was there a fire?
No, there's, there was a lot of wind and stuff like that. There's trees all here and there's a lot of trees back here, but the 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 basically it's the winter time. So when you drive and you kind of, there's trees and stuff like that, the the leaves are down, so it doesn't look as much, but there's a lot of bushes right here. There's a couple of old trees right here. It just looks better this time of year.
All right.
But back here, there's a lot of trees and, you know, it's still, you know, probably half the lot is wooded.
Okay, thank you. Um, so let's um, go to our peer review and hear Mr. Brennan um, talk with us about the common driveway.
Thank you. Um, so I I reviewed a a a previous iteration of the plan and my, the January twenty-sixth letter, which is the latest one that you have from me, um. I restate the the comments that I had in that previous letter and then say kind of what the current status of them are right now. Um, one of my concerns in the last plan was the common drive. There was disturbance within the two-hundred-foot riverfront area that was greater than thousand square feet, which your your wetland regulations does not allow. This revised plan corrects that as far as the common drive goes. Um, I I just wanted to throw it out there for the for the applicants. Um, information is that, you know, the work on the individual lots um, will likely be well over that thousand square feet within the two-hundred-foot riverfront area, so they will need to work with Conservation Commission to um, to develop the lots going forward. Um. Uh, my next comment um, was in relation to a stormwater permit, the previous iteration, they had um, they. It appeared that they had triggered um the requirement for a stormwater permit. Um, the common drive construction itself as presently proposed will not. Trigger that, but again, I believe construction of the individual lots, the the trigger is only. Uh, a five thousand square foot disturbance, so um individual lot development will likely trigger that. Um, requirement for a stormwater permit as well. Um, the. My next comment was in relation to clearing of the lots. Um, however, on this. Well, on the revised A and R plan, they they revised three of the lots so that they're exactly eighteen thousand square feet and. Um, the the maximum seventy percent clearing of a lot does not um come into play until you get over eighteen thousand square feet. So there's only one lot here, um, which I believe is the. Um, it's kind of the middle lot that goes up toward the back of the property. The house is set back the most lot two. Um, that's the only one where they're gonna have to keep an eye on the seventy thousand square foot um or seventy percent maximum clearing. Um, my next comment was in relation to the construction of the drive. Originally, they had shown it as a fifteen foot wide. Um, and when they did that, your common driveway requirements require two and a half foot shoulder on each side so that you have a total width of twenty feet. Um, at that time, I had asked them to show the gravel extending under those shoulders in case a a vehicle drove off the fifteen feet. What they've done is they've corrected that, made the asphalt twenty feet in width. Um, so that that comment goes away. Um, they they are proposing a porous asphalt um driveway here. Um, they they have a, they did submit a revised plan, um, I believe it was last week. Where they they show the actual um porous asphalt, uh. A typical cross section, yeah, right there, that's in the D E P stormwater standards. Um, so that's. That's good. Um, basically, the the driveway should take care of any of the runoff that hits it. Um, the only comment I would have on this is that under. Letter G, which is just to the right of that cross section for the porous asphalt. They're still specifying the um the type one mass DOT asphalt, which is not a porous asphalt, so. The the plan just conflicts a little bit there. Um, they're just gonna have to get rid of that that specification since they're using the porous asphalt. Um, and then my last comment was um. Mr. Orman uh had had gone into detail in his response letter of February first, talking about the requirement for the. Or or no, the fact that state law does not require turnaround. Um, when it's less than a hundred and fifty feet, uh, Mr. Roman just went through that explanation. However, your rules and regulations require a um. A turnaround or backup area satisfactory to this highway survey is how it's stated in your regulations. So if if one were not to be provided here, because it's in your local rules and regulations, I believe it would require a waiver of the board. To not allow uh to not require the turnaround. Um, even if even. I know Mr. Orman's argument with that with state law uh doesn't require it, however, this is a local regulation which is more restrictive than state law. And since it's required, I believe a waiver would be required if if it were to be constructed that way. Um, those those are my comments on on the common driveway.
Yeah, can I just interject something about?
Um, Mr. Orman, we're gonna go in order here, please.
Sure.
Um, uh, first, I'm going to turn to the planning board members, Mr. Brewer.
Maybe we should take, can we take the chief first?
Um, Assistant Chief Doc Ray, please.
Thank you, um, Madam Chairwoman. Um, regarding the turnaround, uh, as stated in the applicant's letter. That it's not required under the fire code because the common driveway is only a hundred and twenty feet. Um, that is, that is correct, but also in the code that he is citing. Um, in chapter eighteen, section one point one point six. Nothing in this section shall reduce the requirements established by cities or towns under Mass General Law forty A as an alpha. And planning and zoning bylaws. So if you, your committee has this established in its zoning by, or excuse me, in its planning bylaws. Then yes, then we require a turnaround. It will uh make it safer for our apparatus. To enter and exit the development. We don't have to worry about backing out into oncoming traffic. Because Lambert's Lane is a busy street from May to probably October. Uh, even though it's a dead end, there's a golf club down the end that has a approximately three hundred members. Um, that is very busy, uh, not only with members playing golf, but it has functions. So I don't want to put my members in any harm trying to back out a piece of apparatus. Uh, into a roadway. Um, so yeah, I would request this turnaround uh for. The common driveway and I'd ask the applicant, please submit a s- a swept path analysis report. For review uh to determine um that it will work for us.
All right, thank you. Is that all, sir?
That's all right now.
All right, thank you. Um, then I'm gonna move to the planning board members, Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, just to follow up with Chief Doc Ray, um, uh, there was an issue with the hydrant um distance uh to these houses. In your letter?
Yes, uh.
Can you follow up on that?
Sure. In the applicant's uh plan that was submitted for review, it shows the hydrant to access to this this development. Is off a hall street, which is across, I believe, from. One twenty one hall street and that makes, we need to go through backyards. To drive across backyards to establish a water supply in event of a fire for this development. That doesn't make sense.
Well, there's a, there's a, there's frontage here. If you see the plan, there's frontage right here. Where you could go through this pathway here, you can, you can bring the fire hose right through here.
But Chief needs to go from the hydrant on pavement.
Right, exactly. Yeah, we don't drive through people's driveways. And back yards to establish a water supply. We bring our supply lines from hydrants that are on paved roadways. So that's, that's not, that's a non, no style for us. I would ask the 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 applicant. Uh, establish or install a hydrant at the entrance of the common driveway of this development.
Yeah, I was waiting for you to get, I said, yeah, what did, we can do that, John, but I was waiting for you to get back to me if the water, the water pressure would would satisfy.
Okay, uh, I didn't see that. Yeah, I didn't see that. Um, we will need to get uh West River, uh, where, excuse me, Wear River. Um, Water Company on board for this, um, to see uh if what their main size is. Yeah, on Lambert's Lane and if there will have be enough volume for the new houses and for uh fire suppression. So we'll need to get Wear River on board.
Okay, yeah, so I'll, so how do we do that? Should I call?
I'll reach out. I will reach out to Russell at Wear River and advise him about this uh proposed development. And the need for a hydrant uh on Lambert's Lane by the entrance to uh. Uh, the the common driveway for the development.
Sounds good.
Excuse me.
Great, thank you.
John Doc, great. Just thank you for your commentary. It's Lauren Lind. If you could also just include, just copy in um John Howland on those discussions.
Yes.
I'm sure John will want to know about that too. John, John's not here to join us tonight, but I know that that would be of interest to him.
Yes, will do. Thank you.
All right, then.
Okay, so let me just make a couple of quick comments. Um, uh, on 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 our file and the on our hard drive. Um, this particular version of the common driveway doesn't uh doesn't show up, so I can't pull up a kind of clearer. PDF version uh than what I see on my screen in front of me. Um, I I get the concept. It's a relatively short common driveway and then um and then three driveway, three driveways branch off that. Um, that's the, that's the the general concept. Um, and where uh our. Our peer reviewer says our our common driveway standards um. Uh, can be more restrictive than Mass General Law. I I would say any. Any common driveway version in this, this is, I guess, the third, the third version that, because I've seen the other two that we have. On our, on our um shared access. Um, this is gonna be different pluses and minuses of each each version, you know, with with the COVID and all the delivery trucks. Big delivery trucks that are going down everybody's driveway. They always need a a place to turn around. Now, you could design a hammerhead easement space that was a part of someone's driveway or the area in front of their garage. Um, uh, that would, that would do that. Um, uh, and it is as a practical. Uh, matter, whether it um necessarily is a hundred percent of what we have on the. On the common driveway standards. I think though that any plan that you put in front of us, we're gonna. We're gonna look at our common driveway standards and say, does it conform or doesn't it to the standards? And then if it doesn't, is it better? Um, is it more thought through? Because like these. These um, the the house locations, they're rectangles, right? They're they're generic. We don't know where the garage is. We, it's, it's, it looks like it's enough space for for a big house or 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 uh but no, no garage. Um, uh, so uh maybe uh as a part of the plan showing, you know, if you're gonna have a garage, you're gonna. Or not committing to that and and showing what the what the actual path of of the um each individual house driveway is. Of course, you could always just do two um, two um, two use uh to um address. Common driveways, you could do two of them instead of doing this um common driveway.
Yeah.
Um, it's just, you know, it, I I think that there's different pros and cons to each. I I'd hate to see a huge cul-de-sac here. And I'd love to see a hammerhead can, that that's combined with uh something that's useful for uh one of the residents' houses here. Um, and um, you know, the safety is a is a factor. Those are some generalized comments, but but what I see here, I don't think conforms to. Our standards, so I I don't, I don't see it as approvable. Those are my comments and I'd like to continue the hearing once we have some of the other issues resolved on the A and R.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Callahan?
Well, I, you know, I'm looking at our current driveway regs and uh. Yes, fifteen feet of pavement is the minimum for three to five houses. But we also have some construction requirements of how it's supposed to be built and. While the pervious material may be great, I'm not sure our regulations allow for it. And I also don't think our regulations allow for waivers. As they're currently written, so uh, I mean. If if this complies with our current regulations, it's fine, but uh I'm. This is a project that's just screaming out for the kind of reforms we've been talking about because. I think this is an end around the subdivision control law overall, that, you know, and the planning board is not going to have any. Further permitting uh authority over this project. Um, if it does, it'll be, you know, maybe some lot clearing or something like that. But not the overall project, but uh I I'm just, you know. I'm I'm going to insist on strict compliance with our current regulations such as it, such as it is. Um, and and the section three of our current regulations talks about circular, you know, the radius of a circular. Drive or a T shaped drive and so, you know, I trust with Chief Doc Ray, we we're looking at that and and we do have a different requirement than the state. And the National Fire Protection and that's what is going to need to control, so that's all I got to say about it.
All right, thank you, um, Mr. Callahan.
We're gonna run through the border or is everybody just gonna speak at once?
Uh, Mr. Grady and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Brewer.
Fine.
I would second what Tom is saying and I'm into for strict accordance with any of our. Our rules and that goes up to including in the grain of any waivers, which I'm not inclined to do. Again, I would uh. Second Tom's comments all the way down the road, I'd just add my 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 bit on the waivers.
Yeah, I I I just want to supplement that is that, again, the the permeable material may be the better way to go. And you know, it's something where our regulations and its design criteria and how much. By two minutes you need, et cetera, et cetera, is maybe out of date. Um, but. We're going to need counsel to weigh in on how we get around that if we want to accept the proposed construction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Brewer?
So I just wanted to follow up on Tom's uh comment on the on the pervious um that, I think that's um. That's great that he um identified that. Uh, I I I'm I'm not, um. Uh, I'm not sure, I mean, personally, I think pervious pavement is used as a, as a kind of environmental drainage. Um, improvement over uh traditional asphalt and if our our standards don't allow that. Um, that might be something to think about carefully as a as a board or get those regulations. Um, um, uh, to to consider that, um, because I, you know, I think pervious pavement, it's like. Twenty-five percent more expensive, it's uh, it's fussy, it it needs to be maintained. Um, compared to the old cheap stuff that that um that can cause contribute to flooding. Um, uh, we may want to consider that as a board um in relation to this uh and and other. Um, things in the future, but I appreciate Tom bringing it up because I didn't have that on my radar screen.
Uh, is that it, Mr. Clark, Mr. Brewer?
Yes.
All right, so it sounds as if we have. Um, a number of circumstances that people have raised in relationship to the common driveway. Would somebody like to summon them up?
Amy, were you gonna make any comments about the the common driveway proposal?
Uh, well, I, I mean, I agree with what everybody is saying. I would also say that with the. A vertical on the property that it's not clear to me you can use impervious driveway, that it may not actually. Uh, function with such steep slopes. Um, I would also say that I think that the setting is very challenging. And it's very steep and so any design for moving vehicles has to be very carefully thought out. And maybe a margin of error added to it simply because people are gonna go, be going up and down hills and they could be going up and down hills. Simultaneously. So, you know, a common, this is why a common drive can be such a problem. Uh, is that it it is not great in complex topography and and so I think that thinking about that further and. I thought uh Clark's comment about having two driveways rather than having one driveway. May in fact be safer for people that live there and also may be easier to maintain. Um, and I know what you're worried about, which is the impervious surface, which is gonna be a problem with the Conservation Commission, but. You're also gonna have people's families that are living uh in these um steep sloped areas and. It could turn out that it's not a a great idea, so be be creative, think carefully about what's. A good solution uh and for sure, you're gonna need to abide by the minimum, which is what the the fire regulations require. Um, as long and and well, the other things I will say, as I'll say it again, is that uh this needs to go to the CONCOM and it needs to be looked at. And it'd be great if you went to CONCOM before you come back to us because they're gonna be more uh interested in issues and there's gonna be overlapping issues. And we might not be able to do things that if you get them solved at CONCOM first, or if you need some kind of um relief and you get that done first. Then we will be much easier to work with, so that's just my advice.
Well, CONCOM told us to come to you first, so we can go.
He has another comment.
Yeah.
Um, and and I recognize that until I came to the site and until I saw exactly what was going on, then I realized that we. We should not be the first on this one. It should be CONCOM. There's a lot of environmental issues here. But that's not our job. That's somebody else's, so that's why I'm saying take it up with them first and get it worked out. Ninety percent of the time, the things you work out with them, then make ours much less of an issue. So thank you. Um, uh, may uh.
Paul has another comment.
Thank you, Clark.
Uh, and then Mr. Grady?
Okay.
Mr. Grady?
No, Clark. I yield to Paul.
Thank you, Clark. I just want to uh follow up with what Chief Doc Reed was saying. Um, there should be a serious emphasis on safety on this road. If you're coming away from the country club and you're banging up around that ledge, there's literally a blind turn coming up to this driveway. Or this proposed driveway, coming down that driveway, coming down Lambert's towards the country club. You're hitting almost the same thing with a little more eye space. It gives you a little more line of sight. Coming up and around. That kind of scares the heck out of me. I'll be quite honest with you and I see if a fire truck backing out, an ambulance. An Amazon van, someone just coming around that corner and during the summer months, as the chief said. an Amazon van, someone just coming around that corner and during the summer months, as the chief said, that's a really busy road. Someone coming up around that ledge, it's a recipe for disaster.
So, I agree.
Really have you be looking at or have you look at and take quite seriously. Because that's 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 a nasty bit bit of business going around that corner at any time of day.
Yeah, well, we plan to level out, uh, making more visible. Basically, it's a bunch of trees and bushes there, so we're gonna cut those down, create it a bit better. So there's better visibility.
Might talk to CONCOM. You're gonna want to think about that.
You're allowed to cut for line of sight.
Well, I I agree with that, but that's also an environmentally fragile environment is listed on the USGS maps as a protected stream. And so you've got a a complex landscape and the sooner you absorb it and handle it, the better off you're gonna be. Um, Mr. Brewer?
No, I don't, I I I mean, this is, I I think we don't have to continue this hearing. This is just a review. There's no, Lauren, there's no constructive approval issue with a common driveway review, is it? Or is it, um, we didn't read a public hearing notice or or anything. It's just a uh, a review. So we wouldn't continue to a date certain or anything. We would just ask that the applicant take into consideration what we've said and and come back with a revised um, proposal once his A and R work is done.
That's correct. I will just tell you in turn for scheduling purposes, so everyone's on the same page. Our next two meetings are, well, we have one next week, which that's entirely too soon to get this material distributed for everyone to review back and forth. And then our next available meeting is March sixteenth. So that's when we would plan to revisit this.
That's fine. Right. But one question before we go, would you, a Y turnaround, did you see the different turnarounds or a T? We thought a Y would be better for this neighborhood. It would just look more cosmetically like, it would create better symmetry in the neighborhood.
I think I think it's your your job to come up with the best solution that conforms to the standards that we have. Um, and 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 improve on uh, what we have for standards for for uh, safety, convenience and and um, for the aesthetic benefit of the future residents here.
Okay. What, for for John Dockrey though, John, as long as you could turn a thirty-foot uh, fire truck around and we had the right turning radius in a Y shape, would that still be okay for you? Or do you prefer a T or?
Um, well, if you can propose both the Y and the T with the swept path analysis report to review, then we'll make a determination then, okay? But I need to see both the T and the Y and that swept path analysis report to before I make a final decision.
If it's just actually three shapes, is it Y, a T and an L?
Okay, if you can do, if you want to, all three, that'd be great.
Do you need them all on the same plan or could I could I send you the document? I mean, if I could share my screen, I could show it to everybody right now, but.
Well, the my question, um, Mr. Arman is uh, have you used the specs for my department vehicles for your sweat path analysis report?
Yes, I uh, I went to the fire department, got a copy of your turning radiuses for your largest truck and I called the manufacturer of the truck and spoke to them also.
So you do have, yeah.
Truck, the hook and ladder. Yeah, I worked at the manufacturer of the vehicle too and I get videos and have it turns and everything. So I understand the whole process. I understand how that truck can turn. I'll I'll make sure that it works.
Okay.
We all have experience with uh, fire truck turning or radiuses.
Okay, as long as you have those specs and you can show me that.
My question, my only question to you is, would you, do you need that spec for a thirty-foot truck? In that neighborhood, just the houses are only gonna be two and a half stories or could use a smaller truck?
No, we're gonna use, we're gonna use our ladder truck. That's our biggest truck. In the event that, you know, there's a chimney fire or building fire or anything like that, we we get the ladder truck in there first. So that's gonna be like the first piece to try to get in there uh, in the event of a fire.
You fight the fire from above, right?
Correct. Or if we need to get on the roof
Yep.
to access the roof of ventilation, or again, if there's if there's chimneys in these buildings, we need to get up to the top of the chimney and put the chimney fire out. Um, so we need.
Yeah, but would would the smaller truck have a large enough ladder to do that?
I would say no.
Okay.
And and it's safer, it's safer for us to operate off the aerial of the ladder truck than it is off a ground lattice.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so we, we'll meet that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Can I get um, I guess I don't need anything other than to say that we will be seeing all of our people this evening again, uh, sometime in the next month, at least in the middle of Ma- March before.
Our sixteenth.
Yeah, one other question I had, if if we propose widening the road a little bit on the other side, do you need to like plans there? Like?
Well, you have to work that out with the town first.
Okay.
I would, you know, propose something before you go ahead and do it.
Propose it to the town or or?
Something on paper first.
Yes, if you want to submit some information about that, we can discuss with uh, our Public Works Department and John Helen.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right. Thank you very much, uh, everyone. And uh, thank you, uh, Assistant Chief for coming tonight. I know you probably work twenty-five, twenty-four hours a day, but uh, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
So our next uh, discussion is actually about um, items of the future and uh, the planning board and what we want to focus on. So we were first going to get liaison uh, updates. And I'm not sure who has liaison updates. I have uh, economic development and I don't have an update. So uh,
Lauren has uh, Lauren has raised her hand.
Yes, Lauren.
Um, well, I will just give you an affordable housing update since Paul Collier is not here and I sort of serve as the the background to all of these committees anyway. Um, affordable.
No one asked.
You don't want to hear about affordable housing? So affordable housing, um, Steering Committee and Trust continue to meet regularly. The Affordable Housing Trust is moving forward with um, a placeholder on the annual town meeting warrant for the uh, suggested transfer of two pieces of property that are currently town-owned that were taken under tax title. And um, they're suggesting that this be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust for whether they choose then to uh, move forward with like a bid for development for affordable housing or to sell those properties for use to to fund the trust, yet to be determined, but that's a process that's happening right now. Uh, in terms of units, I can tell you, well, you all know um, that you site plan review process concluded with three ninety, um, you know, subject to all of those conditions. They're working on taking off that item certificate to occupancy path uh, and more to come, but they are making progress on those things. I will say um, I've heard about One Pleasant Street, that property at our last discussion, when I updated you about this, the property had been uh, put up for sale um, after the planning board decision process. So for a while, it was sort of up in the air as to whether whomever bought that property after would then proceed with the permitting that was you know, secured through the planning board. Uh, John Helen has heard from the new owner and they do plan to proceed with permitting as was issued by the planning boards. That's good news for those units that we anticipate coming online. There's fourteen residential units there with a twenty-five percent affordability rate, so that'll be a fourteen unit count that will be eligible for our subsidized housing inventory when they come to, uh, you know, when they're ready. And then um, I can let you know that eight oh eight Jerusalem Road, which is the Habitat for Humanity project over in the west corner and the project uh, related for the offsite units for the class of hospitality development uh, are moving forward with their applications to DHCD. So a lot of things in motion and I would anticipate that at least within the the calendar year, we may see uh, fruition of some additional units that are SHI eligible. And then in addition, the Affordable Housing Steering Committee is sort of trying to work through the process as to how we might bring online some, uh, there's a lot of units scattered throughout town that are like little little quote affordable, but they're not really actually deep restricted. So the thought is, you know, what is the process and do we want to actually deep restrict these to get them on the SHI if that's a uh, potential. So we're, they're exploring that process now. So that's a quick snippet about affordable housing. And then if there's any other questions about any of our other committees that I can fill in the gaps, just please let me know.
Anything to say about harbor?
Um, so the harbor committee actually will, I pulled them today to have a meeting. The actual full harbor committee itself has not met in a while. They had sort of pared down to maybe like every three months needing, um, after the harbor plan, you saw sort of the harbor committee start to break into working groups to start to tackle some projects. And the actual larger harbor committee hasn't been meeting as frequently. With that said, we are calling a meeting, um, hopefully within the next few weeks to give an update on a bunch of harbor-related initiatives as well as uh, they're considering signing a letter of support for the Elm Street Initiative, which we'll cover in a minute. Um, but then I can also tell you that through the working group, the CHIP Working Group, which is the Class at Harbor Infrastructure Planning Working Group, they've been uh, really leading this sort of harbor-focused climate resilience initiative and they had a really successful forum. I did host it and uh, helped them organize that, but they really did um, carry a lot of water on that, the members of that group. And they got this whole light uh, night lined up to talk about how we did through our MVP program, storm tide pathway mapping, how that impacts the harbor and sort of looking at climate change and how it impacts our watershed. So really interesting work being done there, more conversations to continue. Um, and we're seeing this sort of dovetail into a larger conversation about climate and resilience in the town that we are hoping to plug in our new incoming assistant town planner, which I'll segue quickly into that. The search has been going while we've narrowed it down. Um, and we're uh, in the process of sort of vetting out a final candidate. So I can't tell you any more information at this point yet, but it's in the works and I'm hoping to be able to tell you uh, a name and some information about somebody uh, shortly, but we're hoping to have this person start like mid-March. And they will support uh, the zoning board, the harbor committee, the climate resilience, the master plan support, and of course, the planning board office and all sorts of the fun things that I do day to day in the office.
That's great.
Um, great. Lauren, would you like, oh, wait a minute, Paul?
Oh, no, I thought you were asking for updates on all our little special committees.
Can I ask a question before we depart from the harbor? Is there any any scuttlebutt on this cohesive wharf project? And when it might come forward for its permitting? Because that might, from the working group, the zoning working group, it might determine how much we need to prioritize the bylaw, you know, the zoning in the harbor.
So, yes, the um, the property owner has paired up with sort of like a local developer to provide them guidance. I don't think they're actually going to be doing development, but they've contacted us for preliminary. They've also assembled a team. They have a local architect on board. Um, they're trying to work through the process of what they will bring forward. We've advised them, uh, they met with John Helen and I, we've advised them that they need to file first site plan review for the planning board and they'll need zoning board relief for the uses that they plan. But they are planning, uh, you know, the major renovation to both the Atlantica Building and the the Mill River Marine location. And I would anticipate, based on the conversations that we've had most recently, that they would be probably filing within the next month or two um, to start a planning board review process, sort of eminently.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So uh, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, Lauren, you didn't say anything about master plan?
Thank you. So um, master plan, uh, it's interesting because master plan is an umbrella that touches so many things. So I I told you a little bit about um, sort of the harbor and resilience initiatives that are dovetailing. Master plan also covers the zoning bylaw working group, which I won't steal too much thunder, but I'll just let you know. Tom's like, there's none to be had. Um, the RFQ process for the zoning comprehensive rewrite. To make a long story short, I sent out a memo yesterday that we have extended the timeline for three weeks for submission. We think it'll get us uh, the potential for more bid responses. Um, so little bit of change in the timeline there. But uh, we we were seeing sort of low participation and interest. And Paul Collier actually cold-called the entire list of people that we had sent out and earmarked as interest that we were interested in to ask what might the barriers be? Why aren't you not interested or participating? So based on his uh, you know, his diligence, we were able to get some potential candidates who might be interested but haven't had time previously. So hoping to get.
Everybody's really busy.
It is a really busy time of year. And also to say, just from being in the field and seeing in the master planners' lister, not only is this such a niche market of what we're looking for a consultant to do, but also there's a high volume of people looking for these services right now. So it's like, you already start at the small pool and then there's all of these people looking for it. So it's like, you really have to think about, you know, when people are looking at assembling these teams and bidding. We are a small fish compared to some of these other communities, so. Um, but we did get at least some interest, so that's that's in, you know, encouraging. So we'll keep you posted on that. And then the other item under master plan would be the Elm Street Corridor Initiative, um, which still ongoing, phase one. Uh, between phase one and two, we've had a little bit of a like pivot and sort of refine scale and scope. There's been a lot of concerns for the community, a lot of support for the community. This is one of those projects that's a perfect example of, uh, you know, we know there's a common goal where we want to improve this and it's been identified in the plans, the master plan, the harbor plan. We've had public input. It's been a weird time to get public input, I will note, because it's all been virtual. So we have people who are, you know, adamantly sort of protesting the legitimacy of the process, but it's like, we have tried to do our best given the circumstances. Um, with that said, we know we need more public input. There's a series of sort of levels of design and engineering that we need to get to, to get this project to shovel-ready. That's what we're working on. Um, we're working with, try to get some sort of refined scaled-back cost estimates for what we might do. So there's progress being made. We'll be returning to the select board. At this point, we're eyeing March first. Um, and actually on this note, I will say that the master plan implementation committee and the harbor committee are considering signing on for letters of support as to how this project moving forward sort of meets the goals that have been identified in the plans. And I did circulate to you a draft that Katie Dugan had uh, circulated. She's sent over a further revised version. So the board might wish, I know this has been a a topic of interest to all of you in the past and particularly in terms of the harbor configuration because of how that matches up with the new redevelopment. So if you wanted to comment or write a letter to send, you know, as part of the public record, that would be something that you could discuss tonight.
Okay, okay. Through all the things like that, we should talk, so.
Send a letter on 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 what?
Uh, on support for the Elm Street Corridor.
Okay, well, um, uh, as a board, we haven't seen that update. I mean, I've I've seen uh, copies emailed of of Jason Federico's most recent version.
But we could schedule that for next week if you wanted us to go through, walk through some information and it would still have time before the meeting.
Well, that would, I think that would make sense so that, um, you know, just like a, like a five-minute presentation of what the status is and then um, a support letter for prior to the select board, I think that that would be great. I think that makes sense.
All right. Uh, well, Clark, while you're speaking, do you want to say anything about uh, a um,
No, I mean, I'm I'm the work, uh, the Elm Street Quarter uh, Working Group um, liaison. Um, and I I will say that the 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 plan's gotten simplified a little bit. The only thing that I have a concern about at this point, I I like what Jason Federico has put together. But the sidewalk width on the on the south side of Elm Street, I think, I I I don't know if there were any dimensions on there, but I think it got shrunk down like from eight feet to six feet, which I think is too narrow to to be a great um, kind of a a real physical great space for people walking in both directions and maybe kids on bikes between the village and the and the harbor. I had said, I think eight feet would be the the minimum sidewalk width there. Um, and I don't know what the latest is in terms of what the what the um, what the neighbors saw. Uh, Lauren, do you, do you have?
Yes, so it's uh, it's it's gotten, it's gotten boiled down to more like six feet and we've heard a lot of community uh, feedback about that. But I think it's a good suggestion and uh, thank you also for suggesting this, that we go over the plans as they are in their latest iteration because there's been sort of so much, I've been so in the weeds on this project lately that I sometimes um, forget that all of you have not been in the weeds. So uh, I think that's a good suggestion.
Not even me and I'm on the committee.
Um, yeah, so I will, I'll have some information to you and we'll give a further update at our meeting next week. And then if you'd like to, we can have a draft letter for you, the support.
Okay, is that, is that what you have, Clark?
That's it.
Okay, then uh, let's see. Um, Paul, Grady?
Hey. The board I'm on, CPC. Well, new and exciting things. Met about uh, earmarking funds for the uh, the housing area over by the police station. The name escapes me. I forget what it's called. But the place by the police station to upgrade it, the uh,
Sixty Elm Street?
Huh?
Sixty Elm Street, is that what that is?
Yes, I did. Yes, the elderly, yeah, I, you know, I hesitated to say elderly because I could get shot in the head for it. But yes, earmark, fixing balconies, paint jobs, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so that's looking pretty neat. The, the Forest Street are asking that we earmark a piece of land or restricted for walkways and as part of an extended park. Um, Conservation Trust, very nice people. And, um, also there was a new plaque at the Cohasset Maritime Museum. My name's not on it, so I'm not too pleased with that, but it's grass and it's pretty good because I voted for it. So, um, that's about it. That brings you up to date on CPC.
That was the Classette Housing Authority, the building that we were referencing at sixty Elm Street.
Thank you so much. It is, that's, that's, that's kind of an important one because it needs some updates and balconies and paint and you know, um, bring it back up to snuff, I guess.
Probably modernization.
I would have to agree with that, so. I mean, firstly, I suggested a different color, brighten it up.
Okay, great. Well, is that it, Paul?
That'll do it for me.
Okay, Tom?
Okay, the working group, the zoning working group, uh, Lauren told you the first thing about the delay and the consultant. Uh, but nevertheless, the, the board, the group is work, moving ahead towards, you know, the, working on the rewrite and we've started to take you know, on a substantive exercise. Um, it's pretty much the consensus that we will be, you know, the the whole rewrite is going to be done in pieces because it'll be very difficult to do the whole thing in one chunk at one vote at town meeting. Uh, and the first part of probably will be reorganizing it, so moving pieces around, moving articles in the more, you know, because so many things have been added on to it in years and it'll just be a reorganization of things. But also to the, the core of, of making anything, any other changes are the definitions, so. We started at our last meeting with an exercise, well, first I had suggested an exercise, but then I was asked to do a side by side comparison of existing definitions and changes to it. Uh, that document's written, I've given it to Katie to distribute. I guess my, my original thought was to bring our board into that process of looking at the definitions and what should stay, what should go, what needs to change. So with all your permissions, when that comparison chart is done, um, I want to circulate it to everybody here on this board as well. The other, the exercise I had thought about was go through the existing list of definitions, check off what you think should stay, check off what you think should go. And then I had already done this, you know, a proposed rewrite of definitions, see which one of those you like or don't, and then suggest new things, so. I'm asking for this board to join with the zoning working group at, at the initial stage of reviewing all the definitions and and participate and help uh rewriting them. So I'll, I'll see that you get circulated on all those materials. So, you know, so we're, we're, we're moving forward with that. I, whether we're going to have anything for Springtown meeting is unclear at this point. As far as the regulation goes, I think you all saw that I circulated some questions to, uh, Carolyn. Uh, Attorney Watzke brought up a good point about our authority. Um, so Carolyn needs to ask some questions about where we go for that. I, I can't sit here and say that on March thirtieth, we're going to be ready to go forward with the rewrite of the regulation as, as proposed. But I, you know, given what we saw tonight on Lambert's Lane, I would suggest that if, if we can't go forward with the big rewrite of the access regulation um, because of authority issues and then we have to amend the bylaw. I am going to still suggest that we go forward with the change in the common driveways as to both the number of lots served and the length of the driveway. That's a change we can make. Because we do have the authority to promulgate the common driveway regs and to amend the common driveway regs, so. Um, that may be all we are dealing with when we come to March thirtieth, but, uh, you know, tonight's project screams out as to why you shouldn't have more than three houses on a common driveway, but that's my editorializing. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about tonight, not just from the zoning working group, but is about the open space committee. Um, Peter announced, Peter Pescatori announced at the zoning working group that he needs to step down from his committee work, including open space, and he's the chair and he's you know, my short time being on that committee recently, he's the driving force behind it. And it now has, is a committee that, uh, has a role in making recommendations on certain warrant articles that affect its jurisdiction. It now has an updated plan. It has a detail like the master plan, a set of goals and objectives. And there is some concern that, um, is there anybody on the open space committee willing to take up the work level that Peter put into it to make sure that the open space plan doesn't fall by the wayside and some of its objectives are keep moving forward, you know? Peter had a lot of time during the day to be able to go to town hall, talk to, talk to Chris when he needed to. You know, so, um, I know Eric's our current liaison. I don't know if anybody else on this board wants to get on. They're short one member now and they're going to be short two when Peter resigns. Uh, but the open space committee, we have to be concerned, you know, and I, I kind of look at it as something related to what we do, so this is why I bring it up. But the open space committee is going to need some help maybe in, in keeping its momentum and its drive forward and so that the open space plan and its objectives just don't fall by the wayside, so. Any, any thoughts on that or?
Um, you, you've worked hard with Peter on that and I think you've, um, been able to get a, a full plan um, and do some implementation with the work you've done in, uh, Wheelway Park and the signage. I think it's, it's really been great. So it, it, you know, Peter, uh, stepping down, I think you're right. We want to make sure that there's somebody there who can, um, uh, can keep the momentum going.
And I, I stepped aside from it last year because of the, just the workload of this board and then the zoning working group, you know, and I, I, I have to look at my time commitments again and can, you know, try and go back on open space and help keep it moving along. I'm not saying there's no internal candidates, but I guess so far the sentiment, the sentiment seems that nobody wants to step up to the exact role and level of commitment to it that Peter had, and that's and I just, I just want us as a planning board to be concerned that we don't want to see the open space plan fall apart and not be implemented, because it had a number of of great objectives to achieve over the next, uh, seven years, um, that, that should be pursued, so. It's just, you know, if anyone in here wants to get involved, there's no reason we can't have two liaisons, two representatives on the open space committee, but or somebody we can recruit or that you know who might be interested in that committee, um.
Is Peter going to step down from CPC too?
Yes.
Okay, so we really have to worry about those two, that too.
We don't.
Well, we do.
I'm not, I'm not worried about.
Yeah, I guess.
I'm not worried about the, uh, the driving force on the CPC, but Peter is the driving force on the open space committee and, and
But we need to expand our pool of people, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I, I, I mean, I might think about it, but I got to look at my schedule. I can only do so many meetings in a week, but, uh,
Right.
Um, so that's all I have for the moment. So it, again, oh, and, well, speaking about the future of the zoning rewrite, Lauren, now, because of that climate thing, Lauren, you circulated something great today where there's actual model bylaws in that subject. Because I reached out after that climate meeting to try to sub out some of the work on climate resiliency and how it works into the zoning bylaw to, uh, Jack Buckley and Tom Bell, but now there's a model bylaw and at our last meeting, Clark, we talked about the low impact things rel- relative to that regulation. I'm going to be away, I'm going to be away next week, but I want to get together with you because um, I'd like to sub out to you, you know, what of this whole low impact development concept, which, I, if I read your materials quickly, I read them quickly, but if I read them correctly, nobody in Massachusetts has adopted that yet into a zoning bylaw. But is there a model bylaws out there? I love model bylaws. They're very helpful. I'd like to talk to you about you know, the concepts of low impact development and how we do bring it into the zoning bylaw, so.
Sounds good.
I'm going to recruit you, whether you I'm recruiting you, uh, already, but, uh, and Lauren, thank you for that climate resiliency stuff, that's going to come in very handy.
Absolutely. And just for reference, I will send, I just sent that to Tom. Tom gets sometimes a little bit more of like planning minutia because I know how interested he is in some of the bylaws. Stuff, so, but I will also distribute that for the whole board to see for their benefit.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so where we are at this moment is talking about twenty, twenty two, uh, yes, Paul, Grady?
Oh, I thought we were wrapping up.
No, no, we're, we have, we have two more items. One is twenty twenty-two planning goal discussion. So we have there the Cohasset Village and the Harbor. We have other, and I put noise on the list because I think that's important, given that the lots that we have left in town are by and large difficult to, uh, develop and they often require the removal of ledge and the physical consequences of removing ledge with, um, battering rams, uh, is very, very disturbing for people. And, uh, I happen to be on the side of town where for the last, uh, two years, that is nothing but we've heard is, you know, some giant, uh, claw dragging and banging and and it's really disturbing the neighbors and it's, it's, and so the question is, is it good for us or should we actually have a noise ordinance? It is possible to remove ledge using dynamite and it is very quiet and it's much more efficient. So my, my own personal view is we need to, to consider the fact that we want to have a noise ordinance at, as it relates to, um, uh, site development.
So banging is everywhere though. It's not just in your neighborhood. It's everywhere.
Well, but it, but it can be done in a more efficient way, more quickly, without having to do.
I don't dispute that. In, in fact, a lot of, uh, over, over the uh, last decade and a half, anytime someone's proposed, um, uh, chipping, uh, often the planning board suggests that the, that the dynamite, um, is, is easier provided you don't have something fragile nearby, a glass house.
Right, well, um, but we don't really have anything to say about that, right?
What, glass houses?
We can make a recommendation, but we can't actually have anything that would save people.
Oh, that's right. Uh, at this point, we would make, we, I mean, this board has, and members of this board have made recommendations regarding what you're talking about, but.
That's, and I would like to, I would actually like to have it based on decimal. Right? So that the sound itself is, is, um, managed. So, but we have on the list Cohasset Village and Harbor. Why do we have that? Well, we have that because there's a lot of development going on in the village and we are basically not controlling it. All it's doing is happening before our eyes. And so the question is, do we want to have a more deliberate process that takes place as the, the, the village actually goes to rehabilitation? The second is the harbor, you know, the, the issue came up about the dock, the issue's going to come up about um, the use of Governor's Island, the issue's going to come up about, uh, what does it mean in terms of climate change? And so we can't step back. What we have to do is step forward and decide what role we want to play and then start and getting ourselves involved. And that means having conversations about, uh, climate consequences, having con- conversations about, do we really want to give up parking and on Governor's Island? That, so that's just the suite of issues associated with that. Um, and I don't know if anyone else has a topic that they really want to take, um, a hold of, but those are at least a couple of ideas for us.
Well, on the, on the harbor and on the village, um, you, you made of just a few basic comments, but it, it would be great if you had uh, something specific that you had in mind that was worth discussing. That would be, that would be dynamite.
I think we need to have a direct role in rethinking what's going to happen in the village. And I feel the same way about the harbor. Right now it's being done piecemeal. We do not have our hand in the pots. We just get asked when the time comes. So what can we do, Tom?
All right, well, so the, the, the zoning working group was taking up the issue of zoning in the harbor with Ernest before okay, uh, special town meeting. We, we were actually originally going to propose some zoning change there. And then the one initiative which is like a no brainer is that there's multiple uh, there's multiple districts on the waterfront, on, on the water side of the waterfront, uh, of the, of the harbor. And we were going to consolidate it all into, you know, what currently is waterfront business. We were concerned about whether new property owners down there would seek to expand the overlay district. But now we see the wharf project. Uh, that's not going to happen and that, I, I asked about the timeline of that project because it's going to start its permitting before we could get to town meeting with any kind of zoning changes at all. So again, it's, it's another you know, shows us that, um, you know, the, the world doesn't operate on our town meeting schedule and we, and, and we are, we're going to be reactive, but that project is not looking to do something that's not already permitted, so in my mind, it's kind of put the working groups harbor zoning initiatives somewhat on a back burner. We can still do the consolidation. We can still decide on our own terms whether we want to expand mixed use in, in the harbor. Um, the wharf project isn't as it's being proposed, isn't conflicting with anything we were talking about. So I, I almost having looked at it very carefully with the working group, I think we can almost put the harbor on the back burner. When I see the village on the agenda, I'm wondering what is, what's the issue with the village? We, we changed the zoning in two thousand and seven to allow its mixed use. We did not see a lot of projects taking advantage of that until very recently. Um, but, and then, you know, before I got on this board, you also created very great detailed design recommendations about the harbor and the village, so.
You mean the guidelines, the design guidelines?
Yeah, yeah, I think those are great. And, and so when I see a discussion of the village on our agenda, what is it about the village from planning and zoning point of view that we want to change?
Well, I think what we want to consider is that if there was to be a hurricane and it was to rain eight inches, downtown would be completely flooded. We are now being asked to, uh, um, approve new development. We should be thinking about advising that development in a manner so that it is capable withstanding what might be and, right? So that, that's what I'm, I'm speaking about that.
Are you just worried about flooding or other things too?
Uh, parking is a, is a serious problem as an example, so we have to figure that one out.
Well, look, look, I, I, I hear what you're saying. And the climate resiliency thing I look as almost a separate bucket. But right now we have zoning that is generating mixed use projects thirty-five feet in height that our bylaw allows. And, you know, again, it's only in recent years that we're finally seeing that new bylaw that we passed thirteen, fourteen years ago to be actually used. The parking, we, we passed it with the parking, knowing it was going to be a problem. There wasn't, there wasn't a lot of parking in the village in two thousand and seven and there's no more today. And the harbor is the same thing. Um, but you know, I guess is, is it the consensus that the bylaw and the design guidelines we have sufficient? That's what I'm concerned of on the working group. Is, is anybody proposing actual changes to what we have? The resiliency is a whole new avenue that we have to address and we're, we will address it, but is there anything in the village bylaw that we do not like or think needs change? I don't think so. As far as the parking, as far as the parking goes, the, the elephant in the room is that the biggest parking area is town owned and the town perhaps at some day has to decide if they want to put a deck on and have two levels of parking. And that's, that doesn't got nothing to do with our bylaw and our zoning and how many apartments can be built. It's just is the town going to spend money? Is the town going to spend more money at some point to provide more parking in the village in the limited space that we have?
So Tom, uh, if you're, if you're interested in having a coherent downtown, you have a downtown uh, visual plan as well as a zoning plan, and we don't have anything like that. So if we can, we, we can do exactly what you said, which is allow people to show up and tell us what they're going to do and that's fine. Or you actually sort of think about it and start to plan and talk to people about doing things. So that you're not just sitting by passively. Uh, Lauren wanted to ask, Lauren, Lauren had a question.
Well, I'll just make a follow-up comment. I, I, I had asked that, um, perhaps you send something to the other members of the board on what you're thinking about, might be issues relative to the village. I think that would be help, um, uh, because you're just sort of throwing it out there and it's, and I think it's definitely something that, um, maybe all of us need to absorb where you're coming from in terms of asking the right questions and then see where it goes. I, I agree with Tom, I mean, from I, I agree with Tom, I mean, from a planning board, we've passed bylaws that, that would allow uh, kind of the. What was ignored, um, planning wise and zoning wise, an, an element that we all think is important and vital with a. With a, um, with a methodology for improving the village and, and, and making it as exciting as good as it can be. Although imperfect. Um, but these other issues that you've addressed, I think are, I think are worthy of, of discussion, but I think we, as a board would. I think we need some more depth from you on what you're thinking, your level of thinking is, so that we can bring it up at another time.
Okay, so the conversation tonight is, what do we want to take on as. Larger issues than our administrative work, is there something we want to work on, is there something that we care about? Is there something we think we need to do? And I'm commenting on the village and the harbor because it's happening and we are going to see it happen, but what does it mean? And I also raised uh, the question of uh, noise, because I think that the, most of the lots that are left. Are going to be difficult to develop and it is very, um. It, it is, there is an alternative means by which that land can be developed, but we don't have any kind of capacity to. Encourage people to do it, why don't we have some way to encourage people to do the right thing?
Well, you know, noise is something that I'm interested in and other, uh, it seems like ten years ago, there was a guy who got up in the floor of town meeting and said we should. We, with a proposal with a citizen's petition that we should not allow um, these noisy landscapers on Sunday. It was like, I think it was just Sunday mornings and I thought it was completely reasonable. Um, and I don't think we should allow ledge uh, banging on all day Sunday, in, in a, I mean, as a start, maybe it could be Saturday and Sunday. No ledge destruction, because that's when most people in Cohasset are, are enjoying their homes. Um, so I, I, I mean, I think you're, you're on to something, um, in terms of outlawing um, the chipping, gosh, I don't know. If we could design with the ledge instead of uh, against it, I think that would be great, but.
Well, all you have to do is use a decibel level as a basis for regulation and it'll work for itself. Anyway.
Maybe just.
Okay, I, I'm going to explore this, you know, I'm going to explore this and bring it back to the board.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other subject they would like to have us think about in twenty twenty-two?
Well, I think we've got a lot on our plate and, and I would, I would, I don't have anything that hasn't been raised already, I'm certainly. Interested and willing to participate in, in following up on um, on all the things that are on the table.
Uh, okay, thanks, Pa- Paul Grady? Oh, oh. Paul, uh, you're, you're muted, Paul.
If you want to talk about twenty-two, um, you're talking about parking. You know, it's kind of like a dog chasing its own tail. There's nothing you're going to do about parking, you may as well just put it behind you and let the town fight it out, because. You keep developing in town, keep building up a town, you're turning a bedroom community into a destination zone, which it's never going to be, by the way. Um, it's just a small village and small town, that's what it is and. But you do increase the parking as exponentially as you go, um. So, what proposal, might I ask, would you possibly have in place? Or could you think about, or could you imagine, let alone drilling a tunnel under one of the rocks down at the harbor and putting. Parking garage under that, building a three-way parking garage, you know, with a nice toll taker right at the front. So, what would you, I'm not, yeah, with the ramps on it and everything, you might even get an elevator if we're really lucky, but um. What do you propose? Seriously, it's a village, it's a small town. And it gets really frustrating to hear these plans going up, and I don't mean to be negative because I'm not. But I'm more of a realist, we spend an hour talking about something that's never going to happen. What's going to happen is the parking is going to increase, it's going to be a bigger pain in the neck than it already is. The village is going to get tighter as we move in another restaurant, and we get rid of a real estate office. And get the stupid pictures down off the glass wall, maybe put a store in there, it's going to increase parking. So what would you recommend?
I'm not committing solving it tonight, I'm saying that these are issues, we usually take one. Time in a meeting, this was a short meeting, this was.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be negative, Amy, I'm just trying to.
I'm not saying you're negative, I'm just saying, it's clear, we don't want to do any more than we're already doing, I think that's just fine.
No, no, not necessarily, but, but Paul, do you have any like planning uh, issues or pet peeves that um, like. Similar to Amy but not the same?
I do, but those are the same things that are coming up at town meeting, I have issues with zoning, this is why I'm on the planning board. I have issues with overdevelopment, I have issues with approving everything that comes down the pike, so yes, I do have issues. But I guess it's something that's going to be up to work through, you know, I mean. You see a town going from say seven thousand to ten thousand people and under, in a short period of time, you're bound to have problems. So, would you recommend parking over across three A in the woods there? I don't know. You know, we do have some unused land, do we want to ruin the intrinsic beauty of Cohasset? So again, that's what I mean, it's about, you know, a monkey chasing its next fix, um. For everything we put in. There's ancillary issues that follow that, you know, we're going to have more parking with the Cohasset Hospitality Parkers, uh, partners, I'm sorry. Um, regardless what they say, regardless what they do, we have, and I'm not saying them alone, but everything we put in. Has consequences. And that's what I look at.
Okay, so, um. I'm going to move us, we have, we have one more thing to do and that is administration, so let's do administration. Um, I believe the planning director has given us updates, and does anyone have items not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance?
Nope.
All right, um, do we have any minutes that we need to approve?
You're all caught up right now.
Very good, so then the next.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, Amy Glassmire, Clark Brewer.
Uh, did you say aye, Amy? Uh, Clark Brewer says aye, yeah.
Yep, uh, Tom Callahan.
Hi.
Paul Grady.
Aye, and since the five was, we are your Lauren of vote too, she's there, she spent the whole time with Lauren, you say aye.
I'll aye to conclude, thank you, it's been a long week.
All right, guys, see you later.
Thanks, everyone, thank you, Angela.
Thank you, thank you, Angela.
Night, all.
All right.
Good night.